All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry that we're running a little bit late. It's currently 5:15. I want to welcome you to this regular called meeting of the Temple City Council. First off, we will have our invocation, which will be led by Pastor Beaman and the pledge, which will be led by Liz Caraway. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you, God, for who you are. We thank you, God, for your grace and mercy that is bestowed on us on every day. We ask you, God, for everyone that is gathered here today, especially our leadership God, you bless them, God, and keep them on the right track and on the right pathway. We ask you, God, that you would lead us and guide us, Lord, for what we need to be doing. We ask you, God, that you would just be mindful, God, that we're working on ourselves. But God, we thank you, God, that you showed so grace and merciful upon us as well. We ask you, God, that ingenuity, God, we ask you, God, for expertise, and God, we ask you, God, that you, God, would lead us more than anything else, and our minds are stayed on you. And we give you honor and praise and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the great republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. The next item is an item of special recognition, and it's to recognize the city of Temple for receiving the official Texas Music Friendly Community designation from the Texas Music Office. So I've got a proclamation here, and then Gina Mascaro, is that right? We'll receive some comments from you. So if you would, come on up and let me read this proclamation. Oh, great. Go on down. Yep, let me read the proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words, you can do there. Of course, yes, we have to do those now. I want you to read the proclamation first.
Thank you all so much for having me here. My name is Jeannie Mascoro, and I am the Community Relations and Outreach Specialist for the Texas Music Office. We're based out of Austin. We are under the direction of Governor Greg Abbott and his Economic Development and Tourism Division. And I've got to say, as someone who was just born down the street at Scott and White Hospital, this is a great honor for me to be here in Temple again. Thanks to Noelle McCoyack for getting us on the path to this and for setting the wheels in motion. Also, thank you to Mayor Tim Davis, Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Walker, and the City of Temple Council members for recognizing the importance of this initiative. And the Texas Music Office is the first and only state-run music office in the country. We've got two now. We've got Tennessee, and we've also got North Carolina, who just started up their program back this summer. And we've been championing the economic development of communities like Temple through recognition of their musical offerings and accomplishments, and we're here to encourage that and to amplify the growth of the music industry within this community. And Central Texas is already a home to a lively and robust music scene. You've got two Temple natives who are recognized as Texas State Musicians of the Year, the legendary Little Joe from Little Joe, Ela Familia. That happened in 2019. You've also got Emily Gimble, who was Texas State Musician for 2020. And Temple is also the birthplace of the acclaimed banjo virtuoso Danny Barnes, and Britt Daniel of Spoon, and the late Lone Star Troubadour Stephen Fromholz. And with venues like Tom Sefcek Hall and the up-and-coming Bold Republic Brewing Company, this is proof of Temple's dedication to supporting its local music economy. And just a little background on this, the TMO's Economic Impact Study from last year showed music businesses and music education directly accounting for under 90,000 permanent jobs. That's within the state. This also accounts for $4.6 billion in annual earnings and just over $10.8 billion in annual economic activity, and that's compared to pre-pandemic numbers. Now, the ripple effects associated with the direct injection related to music business and education bring that total impact, including the direct effects to over 192,000 permanent jobs, $9.4 billion in earnings, and $26.6 billion in annual economic activity. And the state of Texas also recognizes approximately $470 million in taxes and tax revenue from these impacts. And the statewide economic impact would not be possible without the help of music-friendly Texas community partners, just like Temple. So tonight, the Texas Music Office, in partnership with the City of Temple, is proud to recognize Temple as the 70th music-friendly Texas community in the state. And this designation certifies your dedication to promoting the musical artistry and industry within your community here in Temple. And so, behalf on the Texas Music Office, a huge congratulations to the City of Temple and your citizens, and congratulations on Temple's designation as a music-friendly Texas community. Thank you very, very much.
Good. Thank you. It's nice.
It's Thursday.
Yes, thank you. How are you? Good to see you.
Oh, okay, all of us? Everybody up. It's not just me. Let's go. Thank you. Chip, were you gonna say something too? Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'm your liaison to Senator Pete Flores, and we're very happy that this is going on. Many of y'all know that I was born and raised here in Temple as well, and very excited about this program. All I've thought about all day today is music in Temple and what that means here. I remember CAC hadn't been open very long, and I stepped out for the first time to sing a solo right there as part of the Temple Boys Choir. Do we have any of those former members here? We also had the Central Texas Girls Choir. It's a very important part of many of the developments of students here. The Temple High School Program, Fine Arts Program is amazing. Temple College, their Fine Arts is amazing. You think of people like Mary Alice Marshall, Dorwood Howard. Amazing people who have brought us here to this day today, and very excited to continue that legacy on into the forward and bring it even more to ahead. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Teresa? No, go ahead.
I'm Teresa Anderson. I'm the Destination Marketing Division Director for the City of Temple, and the Texas Music Friendly Initiative falls within the auspices of our area of responsibility. You see, members here are amazing committee that we have. I will share with you, we already have a website, templemusicfriendly.com. There you can find music-specific events, music-specific venues, and there's also there opportunity for our music artists to go in and put in their information, their contact information, so it's a good place to share our local musicians, and some people might, you know, some folks who might want to hire them can go to that website and search for talent. So we're hoping to do more music events as time goes on. Our next music event for downtown is December the 6th. It's called Jingle Jam. Got two things going that night. It's called Jingle Jam. It's 5:30. It's right downtown at the yard, so we have at least two artists there. We have some strolling carolers happening that night. It's also First Friday, so we hope you'll come out.
Good. Thank you. Okay, then if I may, let me read this proclamation. From the Office of the Mayor of City of Temple, this proclamation reads, whereas the Texas Music Office is an organization of the Office of the Texas Governor, and for more than 30 years has served the Texas music industry as the information clearinghouse and promotion office for the Texas vibrant music industry. And whereas, its mission is to create opportunity and connect businesses in the music industry, and to serve as a liaison between music business, government offices, and agencies, and to publicize significant developments within the industry. And whereas, in 2024, the Texas music industry created more than 192,000 direct and indirect permanent jobs in communities all across the Lone Star State, and generated $26 billion in economic activity. And whereas, the City of Temple has completed all necessary steps to receive this designation and become one of just over 65 certified Texas cities that joins this exclusive network for fostering the music industry development. And whereas, the City of Temple is proud to align this designation with our civic venues, including the Cultural Activities Center, Temple Civic Center, Bold Republic Brewing Company, and Bird Creek Brewing. And now, therefore, I, Timothy A. Davis, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby recognize this outstanding achievement, and this sends a clear message to the industry professionals that certified communities are serious about attracting and developing music industry growth. In testimony aware of, I witnessed my hand in the silver city of Temple, Texas, on this 21st day of November, 2024. Thank you. Congratulations. Where is this going to hang or sit? Do we know? Then let me hold on to it for a minute, and we'll find out. I saw misspelling in here. We need to get. Very good. Okay, you bet. Thank you all.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quickly, there's one individual that wasn't able to be here today, Mac Pierfoy. He is kind of our homegrown, local guy that really kicked this off, that pushed this initiative and understands the value of live music and how necessary it is to have a robust community. And then I also want to thank staff. You don't just get a designation. It just doesn't appear on your desk and you sign it, and it, you know, it just happens. Lots of hours, lots of staff time. Very grateful to Heather and your team. So thank you very much.
Very good. All right. Next up are public comments. Any citizens that address, that wish to address the council on any matter may do so. We just ask that you step to the podium and state your name for the record. Also, as you know, please keep comments to three minutes or less, and there will be a timer on the screens to help you stay within your time. So we have about five folks. It looks like they have signed up. We'll just go in order. First up is Mr. CJ Grisham.
Ask the council just ahead of time for an extra minute.
I'll watch you. No, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So CJ Grisham, Temple, Texas. I'm I'm here as, in my capacity as Mr. Caser's attorney, but I'm not going to talk about legal things necessarily. What I am going to talk about is that we've got a problem with code enforcement. We've got a problem, and it looks like Mr. Mayor, it starts at the head. And the reason that we have a code enforcement problem is because I don't know who it is that's advising you. I don't know if this is the city attorney. If it is, then we need a new city attorney because we're going to start paying out a lot of money here pretty soon. The good news is, if we keep everything as the status quo, I'm starting to get a whole lot of clients because of code enforcement and the selective enforcement of things. First and foremost, the very last two documents that I've given you on that handout, or I guess it's not the last two, it's their the third and fourth to the last. These are the two cause numbers of 26 each that we litigated in the municipal court and found Mr. Caser not guilty on. And I also found it very offensive, Mr. Mayor, when you compared Mr. Caser's acquittal to O.J. Simpson and his murder. I think he's owed an apology on that. I couldn't believe I heard that. But you'll notice that in these cause numbers that we went to court over and that we fought for years over, on one of them, it's the building is an accessory structure. On the other one, it's a relocatable educational facility. And I proved both of those false in court despite the fact that our municipal judge actively worked in violation of the law to prevent evidence that was clearly allowed into a case. She did everything she could. Thankfully, we didn't have to do an appeal, but we need a new municipal judge. This is a two-family dwelling. Mr. Caser's building is a duplex. Now, the first page here, it says Unified Development Code. You'll notice that's, I only printed out the D's. You don't see a definition for duplex there. You do see a definition for dwelling two-family. That building meets that. It beats down here. Now, it's not an industrialized housing, but let's just even assume, because the code allows it, that it is industrialized housing. It says in your own letter, Mr. Mayor, that industrialized housing is, quote, "designed for the use and occupancy of one or more families." If you look at that next sheet, there is the Blacks Law Dictionary of Design. It doesn't mean that a building was built for that purpose. It meant that it was designed for that purpose. Design means the pattern or configuration of elements or something, the drawing or depiction of an original plan. His plan is the design, and it's designed to be used to occupy one or more families. So it is designed. Even if you try to say it's an industrialized housing, which it's not, it would even meet that definition. Designed to be used as a permanent residential structure. That is a permanent structure. It's got his own foundation on it. It's on giant steel beams and concrete. Then, at the very bottom, this was the other issue. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, is, you know, the city called this a portable building. This is where the county or the municipal judge really violated the law and Mr. Caser's rights was the testimony about a portable building. This is not a portable building. If you look at the Texas Administrative Code and your own code enforcement, your own code enforcement testified, they have no idea what the definition of a portable building is at trial. And yet, here we are once again talking about a portable building. And this is what the judge tried to keep this out, because this is damaging the fact that city code enforcement thinks a portable building is one thing, but when I try to introduce the actual definition to go against the integrity of code enforcement, guess what happens? There's an objection to relevance, and the judge says sustain before I can even argue how it is relevant. You just had testimony about a portable building, but I can't introduce the definition of a portable building? This is the definition. You can look at that building. It's not a portable building. I've got two cases, the next two things there. Hooper v. State, if you go to the last page of that. This isn't the whole case, but I got relevant statutes there. Design, common definitions of, this is Hooper v. State. Common definitions of the word "design" include to conceive, invent, contrive, to have a goal or a purpose, intent. Design is synonymous with intend, purpose, or contemplate. Blacks Law Dictionary, which I already gave you the dictionary of that definition on page two, states that design simply is a plan or a scheme, purpose, or intention combined with a plan. Williams v. State, if you go to the second page, it is apparent, therefore, that the use of the term "designed," because it's not codified in the Code of Ordinances, it's not codified in state law, is an intent on the part of the possessor. Then you've got these two, again, they call it a relocatable educational facility. I provided the definition for that. That's why this was all thrown out. They say that it was an accessory structure. I provided the definition for that, and that goes out. Now, we're trying to call it something else. If y'all don't even know what this building is, how is Mr. Caser supposed to know what this building is? It's a duplex. Stop the madness. At the very least, give them a variance and stop the madness. Please. This is corruption.
So CJ, the reason why, because I anticipated this tonight, and the reason why that I signed the letter, it was written by the professional folks here at the city. The reason why that that letter has been submitted is because instead of doing this back and forth every week, or, you know, two weeks, or, you know, you're here, and then Mr. Caser's here, and just going back and forth, sort of arguing the minutia, I wanted to present that letter to you guys that clearly spells out what the requirements are to have that building be a legal structure in the City of Temple. So we welcome your comments every time. We are, we're an open city, and we want to hear from citizens. But ultimately, the requirements that are spelled out in that letter, which is the 2015 Uniform Development Code, when those items are met and all inspections are done, just like any other building would be done, then this, this building will receive a certificate of occupancy. Until those things are met,
They are met.
That building, that is, that's not how the city sees it.
Exactly. That's why there's going to be a lawsuit.
So when your client and the city come eye to eye, or whenever there's a lawsuit, and you win that, then we'll, then we'll move forward. But again, come as many times as you want to, and we can do this. But until the 2015 UDC code is met, that building will not receive a certificate of occupancy. So again, trying to kind of stop the back and forth all the time, and comply, and you'll receive what you want.
He's complying.
Okay.
Get code enforcement, comply.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I say one other thing? I feel like I just need to say on the record. And I know, Mr. Grisham, you and I discussed Rule 4.02 of the disciplinary standards of the Texas Bar Association in my office a year or so ago. So I just wanted to put it on the record here that we have discussed that, and that I have not given you permission to speak with my clients on items that they are represented by me on. So just to keep that in mind, I know you're aware of.
Your clients being here.
The council, my client is the city, and you guys represent the city, so you are my clients. And Dan Caser is your client. So just be aware, and a lot of what you said is not a problem, but you did step up there and say initially that you weren't going to talk about the law, but then you proceeded to. Okay. Well, it's all on video anyway, and I really just wanted there to be a record of me reminding you once again of Rule 402. That's all I needed to say.
I may write to address my city council and as a citizen of this town.
Okay. We ready? So next up is Mr. Carter. Good evening. I thought about you the other day and realized we hadn't seen you in a while.
David Carter. I live at 69 Runway Lane in the ETJ of Temple. I've been, I attended both trials of Mr. Caser, and I'm, I'm just, I think that the start of this issue was probably the appearance when that big metal building was moved onto the property. I think it, the looks were the problem. And I'm just wondering, was there any effort by code enforcement or anybody on the council to examine? As they were looking at the plans for making this building into a two-family duplex, was there ever any effort to look at the cosmetic things, look at requirements in the code for appearance and cosmetics? It seems to me that it would have been much better to have made sure that the building had a skirt around it, because, you know, the way it is right now, I live in a manufactured home out on Runway Lane, Sharping Field, but all the manufactured homes have skirts around it. It makes them look prettier. And I think that when that building was put up there on cinder blocks, on a real foundation, I think that the looks spooked it. I would encourage you to back off and, and look for ways to fix the cosmetics so that it's a pleasant, beautiful building like Temple likes to pride itself on being a beautiful city. And so I think that you should go that route, enhance the beauty, do whatever it takes with code, code information requirements to make it pretty enough to be pleasant to the city council members and to code enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Good, good, good to see you. Sabrina Young? If you sign up, you have to talk. That happens all the time. People sort of think they're signing in, but you're actually signing up to speak. So we'll, actually, I just wanted to say hello to you. That's all it was. Very good. Rebecca Allen?
I'm actually here about my own properties and some just complaints I've had with code enforcement. I actually didn't make a real big deal. I cannot remember her name. It wasn't this city attorney. I haven't ever met her. But back in 2016, I purchased tax sale properties and foreclosure properties, and I purchased a property on 708 East Barton Street. And the city did not, they filed the, to the demolition orders after the city posted it for sale. So after we had already, it was two days before. Anyhow, I have all that. That's not what I'm actually here for, but they demoed my house on like they weren't supposed to. And the city actually agreed to pay me back, never still has. I've dropped it because I'm working with all different types of stuff with the city. But now, I want to bring up on another property that I had. Officer Jeff Sharp, he continues to cite me on, or, and to the point, I had to sell this lot on, because the neighbor kept on parking in the driveway of my vacant lot. And it was on North Sixth Street. Well, I, I addressed, I would get the notices in the mail. I'd call him. I would go over to the neighbor, talk to him, try to, you know, reason with them, put up, do not park on my property, da, 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 you know. And I would continue to get tickets for it over and over again. And I would have to, and I mean, I'm busy, and I would have to, I would go and I would talk to Jeff, and I would say, hey, I've talked to him, and he'd be like, I'm sorry, you're responsible. Like, that's not a driveway. And I said, it is a driveway. And I would show him where it was. We even drove out there together because I asked him to, and I tried to work with them. Well, I ended up selling it to the prop, I felt like I wanted to hold on to it, but I ended up selling it to the neighbor because I was sick of paying the tickets. I was sick of going to the, you know, having to argue with them, and I wasn't getting anywhere. The attorney at the municipal court, they were not polite about it. I was. I've had emails to show like the back and forth. Well, so I go back to, I mean, I sold the property this year, and I drove down that street for another reason, to look at a different property. And there's all kinds of stuff parked in there. So I called him, and I said, hey, what's been, what did they say? Are they allowing you? Are you getting tickets? And he said, well, they did. They, they sent me a notice, and I called him, and I just showed him the Google Earth map where it was a driveway, and they said it was okay. So what was okay for him wasn't okay for me. And I've never had an, you know, like, I don't have, I don't come up here to the meetings and, and I don't have beef with anybody here, actually. I've only done anything to, stuff to help. And so I really feel like there is some, like, that's not fair. And I did pay tickets. So I do want, I want to pursue how I can get refunded for the tickets that I was charged and I had to pay. But he is a Hispanic man.
He, is that the, is that the?
The new owner that I just sold it to.
Parking there.
Yes. And I didn't even, I felt bad because I felt like I didn't know, I did not want to, like, come down on him hard, but I kept, I'm like, you're, you're good. I, I went back and forth with him for years, a year and a half, before I ended up selling it to him. And anyway, I just, I don't think it's right. I don't think that's fair, but I do want back what I got, was charged for my tickets, so.
Okay. Thank you. Last on the list is Mr. Dan Caser.
Dan Caser, lifelong resident of Temple, Texas. Yeah, it started with your city attorney, several meetings ago, said that the proper place for this to be decided was in your little Jack Rabbit Municipal Court, and it was filed there, 32 cases, and I'd already won two on the ones before that. And so when I came back with not guilty's, you compared the citizens of the temple to the citizens who ever were on O.J.'s case. But all I'm asking is this little letter from, I guess, I don't know whether she wrote it or who, said I turned in incomplete permit application. It wasn't a permit application. I just want y'all to lift the hold on my legal permit because I went through the steps. It was issued. because I went through the steps. It was issued. And the city inspector miraculously, Mr. Chandler's office, uh, the Lynn Barrett, who worked there said that there was two inspections done on that. The inspector came back and said that that was an outstanding duplex. I mean, structurally of sound, the foundation was exactly according to plans, but it disappeared out of the computer system. And, uh, bottom line is I followed it. The building, the duplex is just like it was, uh, y'all apparently got an incompetent city attorney because they just keeps coming up this industrialized building. It's not an industrialized building. That was a site-built building. And it was never intended to be moved. I mean, there's no problem with the one from Wayman Chapel over there. That was the first black elementary school in Temple, back when Temple's wonderful segregation laws were still in effect. Uh, I moved that two years ago to three thirteen South Twelfth and it, they turned it into a house. There's no problem with that. Every house I move, Mr. Davis and the parking lot out there, and there's witnesses. I know you'd always like to deny what you said, but you need to remember what you say sometime. You said, well, but anything you move houses, if I move them to this building, it's portable building.
You said that.
And no, you said it. I've got a witness that we can come in next time. But anyway.
Okay.
Uh, bottom line is I want, I want to be allowed to finish my duplex. Uh, it is not, y'all keep coming up industrialized house. It's not industrialized housing. Somebody needs to read, it's not modular. To say here would follow this, there's no manufactured number because it's not a manufactured house. It's site-built. So this little dog and pony show here, the letter, uh, there's no way to follow it because y'all got it wrong. It's not industrialized housing. And Zoe, I mean, she was supposed to come up with, I still hadn't heard from her. In fact, that first meeting, when I talked about that last December twenty-first, Ms. Davis was going to come up with something, still hadn't. And so it's just, I want to be able to, to finish my duplex out according to the plans. I've done everything. The building is not industrialized housing. It's not a portable building. It's not manufactured house. It's a stick-built house. Just like the six houses that have been moved into Temple since then from out, out of town, one of them on Twenty-Fifth Street, nine eighteen was, it was a Jim Ultra Modular House. And that was put up and they brought it in, remodeled it, no problem. So I'm starting to think it was like Ms. Bart Morgenraus said, uh, Jessica Walker called up Brian Chandler because she, you know, had a beef with me. And, uh, so it's, you know, it's time to quit this selective enforcement. Let me finish. I mean, I just want, I want to finish my building. That's all. I'm saying, let me finish my duplex so I can get it ready to go. And if y'all can come up, I, you know, I find it also interesting that nobody's ever gone out there and looked at it. You know, how do you determine what it is if you hadn't seen it? So it's sort of like old Linus when he, you know, used to shoot into the wall and then draw a bullseye around it. Uh, y'all found the target or Jessica to harass me. Uh, probably the buildings in my backyard, I think, were what Brian Chandler and Lynn Barrett first started on. And now they're, you know, she's got, you know, an incompetent city attorney who is now walking, going backwards, trying to grab at straws. And so I'm, I'm just ask city, you know, I don't want to reissue the permit. I just want it, want it to pull this hold off because it was never revoked. I mean, there was no due process. From what I understand, there was a, a, some, uh, what in the heck is her name? Christine, uh, wrote some memo, you know, with an opinion and that's the reason.
Does, do the permits have a time limit on them? And I'm asking staff.
Issued, I believe they have a six-month timeline where if, if there's no work performed on a permit, then it expires.
So the permit in question has expired?
No.
The permit was revoked.
No, yeah, it was revoked. It, it didn't expire. There was two inspections done. Within time, I called into the third inspection. And that's when they came up this garbage, but they can't revoke something that they, you know, there was no hearing on. On a, because once it set down, it's, it's property. It's a property. It's, it's property right. And you can't just do a memo. And like I said, I went there, Ms. Davis said at that meeting four or five times ago before that trial, this is the proper place to have it is in that trial. Let the citizens of Temple decide. They decided it wasn't industrialized building. They decided I had a permit. They decided I'm legal.
Okay. This is, um, it's during public comments that you've, um, that you want to plead your case and we keep those public comments to three minutes.
Okay.
So we're, we're way over that. But again, the, the purpose of the letter, just like I told CJ, wherever he, wherever he is, um, the purpose of the letter was to give you guys a path forward. And, um, the purpose of the, and the, the letter clearly, uh, states that the twenty fifteen Uniform Development Code is what needs to be followed. And, um, you know, CJ said it's impossible to follow it. I don't, you're saying it's impossible to follow that? Um, but the, the requirements that fall within the twenty fifteen UDC is what are going to be required. And if that means that you can take your current building right now and somehow make that comply, you can do that.
I can never turn it into an industrialized housing because it's not. It's a site-built house. That's the city's problem. That's, that's, I, it is in compliance with the two thousand fifteen code with what it is, a site-built house that was, that was moved in. Uh, it's not an industrialized building. I can't turn this phone, I can't turn this phone into a cow.
Okay. You, that's true. Time's up. We'll see you, we'll see you in, in December.
Not to reissue, just, you know, it's not reinstated, just.
Understood. I understand. All right. Very good. Let's move on now to the consent agenda. It's item number, it's item number four. Yep. Um, the consent agenda is, uh, is considered to be, uh, routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, uh, by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of the council member and will be considered separately. Um, the consent agenda is item four A through four F. We discussed in workshop that we would be, um, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. The consent agenda is items four A through four AF. And we discussed that we would be removing item P, council, from the consent agenda for special consideration. Um, is there anything else that needs to be removed or can we move forward? Everybody good? All right. Then council, I'll entertain a motion on item four A through four AF minus item P.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items four A through four AF minus item P.
Okay. We have a motion by council member Long. We have a second by, um, council member Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote. Items four A through four AF minus item four P passes five votes to zero. Item four P is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing change order number six to the construction contract with RT Schneider Construction Company Limited of Belton for the downtown city center phase two project in the estimated amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and fifteen cents. Um, council, I will entertain a motion on item four P.
I'll make a motion to approve four P.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by council member Long. Council, please cast your vote. Item four P passes four votes yes, zero votes no, and one abstention. Moving on to the regular agenda is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a development site plan for a proposed restaurant on point three seven nine plus or minus acres described as being lot seven and eight, block ten of the Robertson Edition subdivision located in the Maximo Marino survey abstract number fourteen in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as one one two zero South First Street. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And so the location of this proposed restaurant is at West Avenue L and South First Street. It's on the right. You can see that that is actually now a vacant property. And so facing west along Avenue L and, and going clockwise, you can see the subject property, what, what it looks like from First Street. Uh, and then facing south along First and then bottom left-hand corner, uh, across Avenue L. And so you all may recall that this property was zoned, planned development, general retail uh, about a year ago for a vertical mixed-use project. So offices on the bottom and two stories of residential above. It was going to take up most of the lot. Um, and either way, that project has not moved forward. And because the change in use and site plan, this is back before you. But good news is this is one of our local restaurants, La De Lot, who presumably would be moving out to this location from downtown, opening up that space downtown for another restaurant. But permanently locating here on South First Street in one of our important corridors. So what is proposed and what is shown here in the site plan is a thirty-two hundred square foot building. It would include a three hundred and twenty square foot patio on the South First Street side. Two thousand the square feet would be a dining room. Uh, just know that general retail already allows beer and wine sales. And so that is something that the current restaurant does provide and presumably would here. Uh, you can see the parking areas. It does meet parking requirements. Dumpster location up in the top left-hand corner, propane tank. All of that has been reviewed by our development review committee, including solid ways to say this works. Uh, also fire hydrant, that another fire hydrant be required along First Street. And so they're showing that on the map too. And this is in the Temple Independent School District. So, uh, no public notification or sending out notices within two hundred feet is required just for the site plan. Um, does require the public hearing and, uh, did require printing in the newspaper, which it was on October twenty-fourth. So the planning and zoning commission at their November fourth meeting recommended unanimous approval by six to zero with one abstaining. Um, to recommend approval of the site plan per staff recommendation. And those conditions are just compliance with the site plan that we just reviewed. That minor changes may be approved by the director of planning and then significant changes would return to planning and zoning in city council. And that is all that I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Again, thanks, sir. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler?
No, just, um, a comment. I was excited to see the patio out front. I think we need more. Well, we need more of days like this in order to enjoy more patios, but, um, I was glad to see that.
I'll add a comment. I'm excited that they're not going away, but they're moving because the food is good.
Yes.
And it's closer to my house.
There you go. Try the clay pot catfish. That's what I recommend. Mm-hmm. All right. Very good. Anything else? All right. Then I'll open the, uh, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. He's asked you step to the podium and state your name for the record or raise your hand on the platform. No one? No one from the audience? All right. Very good. Then I'll close the public hearing on item number five. And council, if there's nothing further for Mr. Chandler, um, I will entertain a motion.
Item number five? I'll second.
We have a motion by council member Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item five passes five votes to zero. Item six is to consider adopting a resolution, um, approving the final plat of South Point Phase Five of thirteen point seven four five plus or minus acre, forty-nine lot, two block, four tract, mixed-use development with a developer requested exception to the city thoroughfare plan located in the Maximo Marino survey abstract number fourteen, city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, generally located west of the intersection of Case Road and southeast HK Dodge and Loop identified by the appraisal district ID number four zero zero six eight. Mr. Chandler?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And this may look familiar because you all just recently approved the rezoning to allow this plat to move forward. And of course, this is at Case Road. This is phase five of the South Point residential subdivision with some commercial or general retail. And so this phase is thirteen point seven four five acres, forty-nine lots, two blocks, four tracks. One of those lots, lot thirty-seven, is proposed general retail or zone general retail, so presumably for a retail use. And the whole reason this is before you all as a plat is because of the exception to our thoroughfare plan, uh, changes to Case Road, uh, that we had discussed during the zoning that, uh, the connection to the loop and making that a, uh, a collector is not uh, feasible, has not, has been determined to not be feasible. So they're cul-de-sacking that off. We talked about that in the zoning and that triggers your approval. And so the rezoning case was approved, um, first reading on the seventh and, and of course, second reading tonight. So back to back for, for these cases. Uh, the lot sizes range from fifty-two hundred and eighty square feet to nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. But the minimum for the single-family, uh, square footage is four thousand. And in our conference plan, this area is identified as residential neighborhood service and so certainly complies with that designation. And looking at the, uh, preliminary plat, uh, there is actually an overall reduction for this development from three hundred and seventy lots to three hundred and thirty-one lots. And you just see the, the different circles. Those are, um, access points um, and to, uh, project, street projections, and that includes, uh, connection to MLK, uh, but also to the loop. And so thoroughfare plan would also include an elimination of Loomis and Case Road. That connection, uh, does require the exception to thoroughfare plan and downgrading Case Road to a local street, which is how it's built, but also adding, uh, Alton Road as a, a constructed collector and, and also the connection, uh, to MLK to ensure that it's built to those standards as well. So upgrade of all of Alton Road to the neighborhood collector, uh, status. And so just looking at access and circulation, there is the frontage on Case Road and Loop three sixty-three, forty-two feet of, of right-of-way, uh, for Case Road currently, um, which, which is actually smaller than our local, uh, standards, but sufficient for, uh, for fire, uh, access. The applicant is dedicating, uh, public tracts, A through D, and, uh, that for utilities, drainage and also sidewalk easement. Uh, tracks A, B, and C owned and maintained by the city of Temple. Track D, uh, by the homeowners association. The interior, internal roads are local streets with fifty feet of, of right-of-way and thirty-one feet of pavement, pavement standard, local streets. The access from Case Road, uh, would be prohibited except for, uh, retail lot thirty-seven that was rezoned recently. Uh, Tech Dot has also added one-foot non-access easement along the Loop frontage. And drainage, there's no requirement with this phase to add additional detention. In terms of the trails and master plan and sidewalk, uh, ordinance, there, uh, no proposed trails within this section, but along Loop three sixty-three, there is uh, no conflict with the mobility master plan, water and sewer available along Case Road and other phases of the development. Uh, park fees of two hundred and twenty-five per lot standard, which for this phase will be two thousand and eight hundred dollars. Of course, this is in Temple Independent School District and the development review committee, uh, has reviewed and provided any comments and all have been addressed. So staff and planning zoning commission at their, uh, November fourth meeting recommend approval. Seven zero vote by PNZ. Uh, and that also includes for the developer exception, requested exception. And of course, future thoroughfare plan amendments would reflect, uh, if this is approved, reflect those changes to Case Road. And that's all that I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion on item six.
Approve item six is presented.
Approve item six is presented.
Have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Council, please cast your vote. Item six passes five votes to zero. Item seven is to consider adopting a resolution casting the city's votes for Bell County Appraisal District Board of Director candidates. Counsel, we discussed this during workshop, and it was agreed that we would cast all of our votes for Mr. Sam Pilkington, who is what I say? I called Susan Long Susan Luck one time.
That's prequel, not from you, but lots of
Oh, okay. You have another job, Mike. Now you have another meeting to go to. No, I'm sorry. It's what happens when you don't focus. I would recommend that we cast our four hundred and eighty votes for Mr. Sam Fulcher, who is the current representative for the city of Temple on that board now. So, Council, is there any discussion on that? Does anybody have any problem with that? All right, then I will entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve or to recommend or to vote on. How should it be phrased, Kathy? Approve? Cast our all of our votes for Mr. Sam Fulcher to sit on the appraisal district board of directors.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilmember Luck, and most of my Councilmember Long. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. It's currently six oh five.